Good morning. We will call the meeting to order of the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees. Thank you all for being here and thank you for those joining us online. Trustee Gibbons will be calling in and when he does, we'll answer there. But with that, could we please rise for the invocation in the present room? As this is an odd time for the invocation, I did want to read a message. Is that Trustee Gibbons?
Mr. Gibbons? Let me turn you up here. Can you hear us?
Yeah, can you find it?
All right. We're just getting started.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to read a letter written by Martin Luther when the Black Plagues swept through Europe, which I took to heart when I read. It simply says, "I shall ask God mercifully to protect us; then I shall fumigate, help purify the air, administer medicine and take it. I shall avoid places and persons where my presence is not needed in order not to become contaminated, and thus perchance inflict and pollute others, and so cause their death as a result of my negligence. If God should wish to take me, he will surely find me, and I have done what he has expected of me, and so I am not responsible for either my own death or the death of others. If my neighbor needs me, however, I shall not avoid place or person, but will go freely, as stated above. See, this is such a God-fearing faith because it is neither brash nor foolhardy, and does not tempt God. Dear Lord, we pray for our leaders to lead, our scientists to solve, and our neighbors to see risk in reality. We hope that you use this as an opportunity for our community and for love, to cease the finger-pointing and anger that has consumed the camp country, and give us an opportunity to come together. We pray for your blessing on the faculty, the staff, the administrators of St. Petersburg College, who have so diligently been working around the clock to meet the needs of our students, to keep our staff and faculty safe, and to ensure that while life as we know it may change, it certainly will continue to go on, and our students can succeed. In your name, amen."
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you to the trustees as well. In this unique situation, there's -- obviously, we have a state law that requires our meetings to be public, and while the governor's recent executive order and state statute allow for some telephonic hearings and meetings and emergency meetings of other boards and state agencies, those laws do not specifically include colleges and university boards. So I appreciate you all being here. And that being said, our April meeting, we are planning to host virtually, so we don't have to physically come. We appreciate the changes that the staff and administration made as well. We know that many people had presentations prepared this morning to present to the board. We did not want to have a full room in light of our social isolation recommendations from the CDC. And so from the board's standpoint, you all will receive that information electronically and have the opportunity to ask questions of the staff one-on-one as you need to be.
About the chair?
Yes, sir.
I hate to disagree with you, but we are a state agency. The governor asked for state agencies and other folks to be on telephonic calls and other things. I think that he was also talking about colleges and universities.
I'm sure he intended to, and we've had these conversations with the Commissioner of Education and the chancellor, and Dr. Williams and I talked about it this past weekend with Ms. Gardner, and she did some follow-up research on the statute. And I'm sure it was just an oversight from the state at this point that we have confidence is going to be quickly remedied in light of the situation. So, thank you. But with that, I'll turn it over. We do have -- we're just going to go through and have a shortened agenda to take action on a very limited number of items. And so with that, I think the first thing we're all interested in is probably Dr. Williams' update. I don't have my truncated agenda. I have the full agenda. So, Dr. Williams, I think I'll hand -- unless we want to have comments first, I thought Dr. Williams might give us an update on the status of the college being open and our transition to virtual learning.
Thank you. Trustee Gibbons, do you have any other comments? Trustee Gibbons?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So, since we heard the news and knew that the coronavirus was coming, the college started pulling out its continuity plans, looking at them regularly, making sure that we were well-prepared. And then we went on spring break, and everything changed. The things that we were told, hey, we're probably not going to do that, we found out we ended up having to indeed do that. And so the college family came right back from -- even before spring break, and started working on how can we offer online classes to our on-campus students, those students who had opted not to go online. We already had a continuity plan in place. The deans, along with some other administrators, started looking at the plan, working on those issues, especially for the courses that don't lend well to online instruction. For example, our health programs with the clinicals and the different labs, our anatomy and physiology, our police academy and fire academy, and some of our other programs, you have to have hands-on. So we knew that we were going to have to come up with some kind of alternative instruction. So we've been having conference calls every day. We had a call yesterday to find out where we stand on being prepared to be online on Wednesday. Many of the colleges took an extra two weeks off or a week off, but their spring break is going on right now. So they get this whole week to prepare. Because we already had a plan and we've already had spring break, our team confirmed with me that they're ready to roll on Wednesday. They didn't want to further delay or have any more out-of-class time missed, especially for on-campus learners who aren't really ready for online. They felt like the sooner we can get up and running and work with the students, we'll be able to keep them on track and keep them moving. Taking another week will cause even more delay in their learning and keeping them on track. The other reason we thought we'd want to stick with it is we did not want to have to delay the semester and end it later and change the start of summer and all of that. We will be doing some of that for our limited access programs, and most of them are cohort-based, so they kind of can do their own thing. So for nursing, the hospitals are starting to cancel clinicals on us, so we've been able to use the simulation lab. So we're going to try to keep it going and not have to stop nursing. However, for the fire science program, we are going to delay two weeks. The firefighters are doing what they do with emergencies and things of that nature. They're our faculty, and so they're not going to be able to stick around, and so we're going to delay for a couple of weeks. So here's where we are. We have about 500 laptops. We'll be distributing about 250 of them today to employees for them to be able to work from home. Since the school district shut down, we have employees who are also parents, and they're trying to figure out how do we do both. And so we scrubbed these laptops. We've got a little more scrubbing to do with some. We'll be distributing them to our advising staff, our finance staff, our budgeting staff, those who are doing those back-office service functions, even our tutors. We're implementing Zoom and using Zoom, which is a video conferencing-type deal for our online students to video some of our classes and send them to the students. So it's not just a lot of blogging and logging in and doing those type things. Tomorrow, if everything goes well, today, I expect to announce that the majority of SPC employees will be working from home. We'll be able to highlight the links of services to our students, how to reach an advisor, how to reach financial aid, how it will work. We will have a limited crew on the campuses. We will announce where they are, when they are, and what that will look like. The chancellor sent an email this morning at 3:28 a.m. saying now they want to meet with the colleges again about going forward, because the CDC just sent Florida an entire recommendation on what we should be doing, and it includes colleges. So we're now included. So the governor said, "School district shutdown, universities do this," but the state colleges, they've asked us to stay open. So I believe that today or tomorrow, when we have that conference call, they're going to say, "How much can we do online and close?" Because we have to also protect our faculty and our staff, you know, as well. So that's where we are. Yesterday's conference call was about, what, an hour and a half, two hours? We're sticking with our daily communication with the Emergency Task Force with the county, keeping up with what the county is asking us to do. I've communicated a couple of times with Mike Grego, as well as the USF Regional Chancellor here. So that's where we are.
Are there questions for Dr. Williams? I'm sure.
You've done a fantastic job of keeping us apprised of what's going on, so I honestly don't have any questions and fully trust that you're doing everything you can to keep the staff and faculty and students safe.
And we're also going to open our food pantries and our crisis closets with clothes and toiletries for students. We've also -- we'll be putting in an announcement to remind them of the free BayCare counseling sessions for those who need it. We're working with our veterans, our students with disabilities. They're already working on how to keep them whole and keep them moving. Our international students and our athletes, some of the athletes who are international athletes are asking to go home, and they want to be able to be assured that they can finish their classes online. Yesterday, we determined that that is the case, that they'll be able to keep their classes online. The facilities crew is hiring Belfour to come in and do a major disinfecting scrub. Some of our facilities members are sick, and we have had members who traveled out of the country and on cruises who are on the self-14-day self-containment at home. And we have some folks who are sick. So they're home. They're not at work. And so we're trying to move forward. Did I miss anything, guys? Okay.
What a -- one substantive -- thank you, first of all. And I know that you all have been receiving reports, and Dr. Williams and I have talked more probably the past five days than we have in a long time. And a special thank you to the entire team who, you know, beginning midweek last week of a week that the entire college was supposed to be closed, started getting on calls and then spent significant hours in person on a whiteboard trying to figure out what the options were for St. Petersburg College. And I just, for you all, on my way here, I was on a conference call with BayCare, with the board, and it was reassuring, because as much as there's the thought of social isolation, everybody, you know, we see what's happening in Italy, there was a reinforcement of the CDC's guidelines, that 50 people or less, and make sure things are clean and make sure things are disinfected. And I was reassured, because on one hand, there's a tendency to panic and think we need to shut down and everybody go inside, and -- which is another reason why, you know, I felt comfortable this morning, so long as we're within those guidelines. And so I just appreciate everybody's hard work to do that. We know there will be people on campus, and that's okay, and we'll be sure to stay within those guidelines. And we expect that if those guidelines change, we will be nimble and have to change. But our biggest goal, one of the things that Dr. Williams and I talked about, which was an eye-opener to me, which I think helps understand the situation we're in, there's a variety -- while we anticipate there will be relief in many of these areas, we have students who are at the end of certificate programs where their jobs rely upon it. We have students who are graduating and moving on to another academic program, and even though that might be five months from now, they're relying upon what's happening right now at St. Pete College to fulfill that. We have students that are receiving certain loans and grants that have an obligation for them to complete or do hours. Veterans and the financing that they receive and financial aid that they receive doesn't allow for 100% online learning. And so how are we balancing those types of requirements? And so this is not as -- while in and of itself, just the physical distribution of people would have been difficult, there were so many other factors to balance and consider that the administration and the faculty and staff are learning every single day, and we just appreciate all of that, because it's a lot.
Thank you so much. And we do have students who don't have access to technology, and so some of the communications companies are looking at allowing our students to have free Wi-Fi. We have not tapped into exactly what and where and how to get that to them, but we're also looking at laptop loans for those students who don't have the laptops at home, but also looking at how do we help them get the Wi-Fi, because that's going to be critical to being able to log in. The faculty have just stepped through hoops. They have been amazing. Rita, Bill, you guys have been great. Jackie, Rebecca, everybody, Suzanne, everybody's working hard. The deans have been doing -- the provosts with the associate provosts. So we're really hoping that we'll be able to have a serious skeletal crew on campus, and the majority of the college family work from home. Those who have roles that don't suit well for working from home, like groundskeeper or facilities, we're looking at professional development opportunities and other functions that they can serve to help us during this time, and then rotate them on and off campus as needed. So we're looking at other alternative opportunities for us to catch up on other things that we need done through those employees.
Substantively, faculty that are not yet prepared with their class to be virtual or online, once we go up and running, what's the plan to help wrap around those and support? I know the deans are working hard with --
Actually, the majority of them, they can, are prepared. If they aren't using my courses, they're using Zoom. They're actually pre-recording their lectures and sending them out. Those who are not comfortable or, you know, you know, these are the same as the students. They want to be face-to-face. These are the faculty that teach face-to-face. And so we're using alternative tools for them to be able to record their lectures and work on getting them captioned, so that the students can see the lectures, and then they can email their instructors those questions. So that's how we're handling that. And all of the faculty will communicate with their students about what changes are going to happen in the class. Many of them have already done that, and some will be doing that today to say, "Hey, we've got this. Here's how we're going to do our class. Here's what's going to happen." So the student will get that directly from their instructor.
Great. Anything else?
Any word yet from the state on what we may be looking at as far as performance funding changes, considering what's going on? Or we'll get to that at a later date?
We will get to that at a later date. This is, I think, the cooling-off period for the budget. We ended up getting a couple of things possibly in there, but it has not been confirmed, and then it still has to be approved by the governor. We cannot find in the actual budget yet where they are with performance base or the new seven-tiered growth enrollment growth plan. So we're waiting to see where we land on that. Probably we'll be much smarter on Friday.
But the idea is that the steps we're all being forced to take now, they're probably going to be a little bit more lenient on whatever that performance funding is next year, looking back at this year.
I don't think --
We can hope.
Well, I'm not sure that the performance funding is all based upon the things that the college presidents would feel that performance should be based upon.
Sure.
And so the performance-based funding, unfortunately, it changes sometimes every year. So you do the work, and then it's time for them to do the budget, and they say, "Well, we're not going to use that now. We're going to use this." And then you haven't had a chance to work on those areas. So we really don't know. Even with this seven-tiered growth model, there may have been some changes in the Senate to that model, so we really, we're waiting to hear on where we are with that.
Great job.
Well, thank you guys for being patient and, you know, taking all of my emails. You responded to them, you know, to say what you thought, and I appreciate that.
Moving on, if there's no other comments generally --
There are.
There you go.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
These are some things I just can't let go by, because they're just amazing.
Yeah, there's still lots to celebrate.
Yesterday, Chief Chad Pittman from the Largo Fire Department donated a fire truck to St. Petersburg College.
Yay!
That's a big deal. We needed it.
That's great.
And we don't have to pay for it, and it's in good shape. And so we're real proud of that. Also, one of our donors decided to give the college another $350,000 yesterday to help us with nursing.
Great.
Which we were very happy about. And one of our students, Alyssa Hardy, was selected as a Silver Scholar for the Coca-Cola's 2020 Academic Team for Fatteh de Kappa, and she got a substantial scholarship. And so in the midst of all of that, we did get good news. We also hired a vice president for academic affairs during spring break. His name is Matthew Leao Troth. He's coming from the Hawaiian system, has been a senior VP of academics, so he's not new, came in with a lot of good ideas. I'm very excited to bring him on. He'll be starting in July. So still working on the VP of Finance, but just thought that would be some good news for us.
Great.
I don't have any cards for public comment, and I don't see anybody in the audience. So with that, we do have a few action items that we wanted, that was really one particular that we had to do that was the reason for this meeting today. So if we can go through, first is the review and approval of the minutes from our February meeting.
So, men.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next is the proposed 2021 academic calendar.
Before we go there, can we have General Counsel make a comment about the union?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I skipped over your monthly report. Sorry.
No problem. Good morning, and thank you all again for all your hard work and told you that somebody have the college. You should have with your packet just a short memo concerning the initial meeting of the adjunct union, SEIU. That meeting did take place at the college, the Friday before the break, March 6, at District Office, and that was for the purpose of introductions, and also looking at kind of our timeframe and our approach to collective bargaining. So there was a team there from SEIU, was also a team from the college. We had, I think we had three public observers. The discussion focused around just the approach to bargaining, sharing information, and then looking to our timeframe for moving forward with collective bargaining and a contract. We did agree that we would have our second meeting on April 9, and so far, that's still set over what happens. As we get further along, we will certainly keep the board apprised. There's been no discussion of substantive matters or any proposals at this point, but as we move forward, we'll keep the board apprised, and as necessary, we'd like to have the board feel free to request a meeting, a shade meeting, to discuss some of the negotiations and keep us moving forward. But ultimately, it will be the board that will be moving the contract. So if there's any questions, let me know. We're moving forward, and it's very collaborative, and we feel like we're heading in the right direction.
Ms. Gardner, at what point -- are there any other questions? At what point in the negotiations, perhaps after the April meeting, you'll better be able to answer this, but would you need the board's input via a shade meeting to -- with respect to some of these issues?
Okay. No, that's a very good question. What will happen is they'll bring proposals and different terms and conditions to the table.
I'm sorry, I can't hear a thing that you guys are saying.
Suzanne, can you --
Can you speak and come speak in the mic?
We're moving closer, Deborah.
Deborah, did you get the text of the actual document? Trustee Gibbons? Hello?
I have the document, but I cannot hear anything. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
We're moving closer.
Okay, thank you very much. The question was, at what point would the board be receiving any kind of request to have a shade meeting with the representatives of the college concerning the union? As we move forward, we'll be bringing proposals or reviewing proposals of the union at our different meetings. I would imagine it would not be in the first several months that we're working on it, but as we move forward, where we get to the point where we really have a consensus on really key issues, we would like to bring that to the board and have the board provide their input, so that we keep moving forward with the document that would include terms and conditions and provisions that the board has reviewed and has weighed in on. So I don't suspect that that will happen in the next several sessions, but as we move forward, we'll certainly provide where we are on some issues, and certainly keep you apprised of the process.
Very good. Thank you. Trustee Gibbons, any questions? Okay, moving on to our strategic focus. At your seat is the strategic plan dashboard, which I know you all are familiar with looking. I did want to suggest, and I apologize, Dr. Williams, you and I did not speak about this before this meeting, but it just popped into my mind on the way here. One of the board's directions with the strategic plan has been to align the budget with the plan and to ensure that there's focus, and the staff and the administration is not feeling spread too thin. And in a time where so many resources are being reallocated to facilitate new and different learning, I guess I'd ask for the board's feedback on your expectations with respect to the strategic plan status and goals, and should we look at any of these particular goals and try to limit what the board, what the college is working on right now? Or do you all feel that these are generally, because they're reflective in state funding and other things? I just am very cognizant of spreading too thin, so just was looking for feedback with respect to that. Whether limiting, if we would like Dr. Crawford perhaps to come back next month with a, "These are our hot topic priorities," or do we just want to keep moving forward and see what happens in the next 30 years? Or do we just want to keep moving forward and see what happens in the next 30 days?
I think it may be.
Be able to take increased attendance off. Be a good place to start.
Yeah.
I mean, in my opinion, I think it may be a little too early to start making changes. I'd like to see how it plays out a little bit and then get feedback from those directly involved to see, would they like a more specific, or more, more specific guidance on where we need to focus? But for now, I mean, this was discussed about a lot, and these were the areas where we wanted to hone in on. So I'd like to see it play out a little bit longer before we start narrowing the scope again.
Thank you.
I agree, with the exception of the events portion. Very good. Okay, I didn't want to have this pass by and.
It's a fair question.
Thank you all. Next is our proposed academic calendar. It was provided in the packet. This is something that we're obligated to vote on. Do you want to speak to it?
Yep. This is our academic calendar. We work with a number of individuals each year throughout the college, and we program our system to be prepared to implement the calendar as it's been presented for your consideration. We kept the number of holidays the same. We did not increase them or do anything. We're not above what the state allows, we're below that, and we've kept the schedule pretty steady. I think that for the '21-'22 year, we will probably look at how we can better align our time off with the school district as well as the universities. I think that is important so that when decisions are made, we can better align, you know, our decisions and how we do things because we all kind of butt up against each other. And so for the next one, we'll be bringing a more collaborative schedule. It'll give us a chance to get ahead with the school district early because they do theirs early as well, so we would have to start working on that now for next year. So we're hoping to be aligned with them on our next go-round.
I think that's good.
I do, too. We've also looked at some of the other state colleges and looked at all of their spring breaks, how they organize it. Many don't organize it with the school district, but I think some of the better ones do, and I would like to be a part of that, that we align as much as we can. And it's not because my team didn't recommend it, because they did. They recommended that. They've recommended that in the past before I started. I think that this situation, to me, is just a prime example of how this would have worked much more smoothly had we been aligned, even though I think there could have been a better, a better process for the community colleges to have experienced than what we've experienced in the advice we've been given. But this one is a good schedule. I just think the next one will be aligned with the university and the school district.
Very good.
I move to accept the proposed 2020-2021 academic calendar as is.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I would like to call your attention to the budget report that was handed out this morning. And if you could please take a look at this, we asked Ms. Hunt, we told Ms. Hunt she didn't need to be here this morning to give this report, but obviously, as we get closer toward the end of our budget year, this is something we need to focus on. And so in April, we will be talking about this more, but if you have any questions, please reach out to Dr. Williams so we can review that, unless you have any questions now, just looking at it.
Jeanette asked me to share that we are on track with our state funding and our revenue. The first lottery allocation was received in February is 1.9 million. Our fund transfers in from auxiliary will be processed closer to the end of the fiscal year. Our enrollment financially is down 2.6%. As you know, we align our enrollment with our budget projections because the biggest part of our funding comes from the enrollment, and our enrollment is not up. July through February represents about 67% of the fiscal year. Our personnel expenses are at 64%. Our current expense is $3 million lower than the prior year.
Wow.
But that is also due to a one-time transfer in, out of the health insurance fund from last year. We don't expect to have to do that this year. Overall, our operation expenses are on target, at 62% of it already expended. We're really projecting to have a surplus of $302,000 at the end of this year, which for me is great.
Yes.
So. When she comes back next month, we'll be bringing information on the timeline, on the new budget development. We should have everything from the state on where we really landed and what we'll have to work with so that we'll be able to bring that to you for your consideration and review as we create the new budget. The college family is working on their budget proposals, and we'll be submitting those next week. And that'll give us a good understanding of where we're going to be in the spending we're going to need to consider.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, we have our consent agenda, we have new business, administrative matters, there's a personnel report, our membership assessment in the insurance consortium, Florida DEO training incubator at Midtown accepting that grant, wonderful. The lease agreement for cafe services and credit curriculum changes. We'll take a motion all at once.
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and as usual, there are reports from each of the DSOs in the package, and there's an excellent PowerPoint from the St. Petersburg College Foundation as well. So are there any other questions or business to come before the college?
The only thing I would like to share is, as soon as we receive the legislative outcome, we're going to send you guys an email. But also next month, we're thinking about, or maybe in May, having our lobbying group come in and present to the board for you to meet them and for them to kind of give you an overview of the legislative session. Keep in mind, they were only working with us like the last three weeks, so they've done a yeoman's job. Erin has been working with them and has been up there for the last two weeks, you know, lobbying for the college, looking at opportunities for us to get sprinkle dollars and some other things. So we're looking very good, from what I'm understanding, and we'll be emailing you the outcome, but we want to bring them next month. So we're going to really look at our presentations, and we might shave one off, Chair Cole, so that the lobbying firm could kind of present.
Great.
Okay. And that's it.
And I'll ask the board, and obviously, everything's changing on a regular basis. We were planning next month to have a virtual meeting regardless of what happens, but open to your feedback as to if we have virtual meetings with, holistically, if you all would prefer to be in attendance with proper separation and.
Skeletal crew.
And have a skeletal crew, and we'll have our presenters do that virtually? Or what would be your preferences?
Virtual's fine by me, if that's the direction we need to go.
Yep.
Okay.
Fine.
Okay.
I'll just go wherever.
Very good.
I'm going to go with it.
All right. If there's no other business to come before the board, again, we appreciate all the hard work of the entire college community. We know the past five days have been extremely taxing for each of you. Big kudos to our deans and our IT group, especially not to raise them up as opposed to others, but I know that that has been the significant issue. So we appreciate it all and look forward to getting our students moving forward for success. So we'll adjourn.
You do.
Thanks, sir.